Yeah, two twenty-six.
Okay.
Last Thursday in June.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. First up, we have the work session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boson here.
Mr. Boson.
Mr. Nichols here.
Mr. Nichols, Ms. Craden Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs. Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder. Mr. Voice.
All right, can I have someone make a motion, please?
Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and the approval of the minutes of the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five work session as proposed or amended.
Second.
All right, we have motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, first up, we have Main Street Waterloo. Update from Main Street. Jessica.
I apologize, we're having some technical difficulties.
Okay.
Well, hello, while we try to get it on the screen for you guys, thank you guys so much for allowing me the time to give you an update about what Main Street Waterloo has been doing over the past year, and why downtown revitalization is such a vital piece of our community's success and future. Sorry. Um. Are you getting it up? Um, Main Street Waterloo is a volunteer-driven nonprofit organization supported excitedly by two full-time staff members. Our mission is rooted in deep commitment to preserving, enhancing, and promoting the vitality of our downtown at the intersection of business, culture, and community engagement. We work to protect, protect, and celebrate the unique architectural and cultural heritage of our downtown, and we support businesses, encouraging growth and drive investment into downtown. We create opportunities for connection through events, beautification, and place-making initiatives. We have been a Main Street accredited community since nineteen ninety-six and support more than two hundred businesses and more than one hundred property owners. Our work is part of a national movement under Main Street America, launched by the National Trust for Historic Preservation in nineteen eighty. The idea was simple but powerful: use preservation-based economic development to revitalize downtowns and strengthen communities. Main Street America has helped more than two thousand communities revitalize their downtowns, bringing back life, businesses, connection, and connection to the heart of our cities. This movement began at a time when highways were pulling people away from the small towns, malls were luring businesses out of the historic buildings in the heart of their communities, and into newer, shinier developments with climate control, and let's be honest, the idea of what felt like unlimited parking. In nineteen eighty-five, Iowa took action, and the legislature adopted, adopted the Main Street model and created Main Street Iowa as a part of the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Today, Main Street Iowa is recognized nationally as a leader with more than fifty accredited programs. We use ESRI, a geographical information system that is used by the city and the state to track and understand trends. The slide that you can't see, that I will make sure you guys all have a copy of, uses data from twenty twenty-three because I have not received the twenty twenty-four data. But within a five-minute drive of the heart of our downtown, there are about twenty-one thousand residents. Of those, nearly two thousand people live directly within our downtown district. That's a strong base of residents helping to support local businesses and activate the area year-round. Per capita income within a five-minute drive of the heart of our downtown is twenty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars. We are seeing an increase to this number each year, and it's a sign of upward mobility and economic progress. The median age is thirty-four and a half, showing our downtown is continuing to attract a working-age population, ideal for growth, innovation, and long-term community investment. Ninety-two point nine percent of the residents within a five-minute drive are employed, which underscores the economic stability of the area and reflects how connected our downtown is to opportunity. Downtown is more than just a destination, it's a diverse and growing economic center where residents, businesses, and visitors all contribute to a vibrant and sustainable future. Main Street Waterloo is guided by transformation strategies, which provide a focused, intentional roadmap for revitalizing and strengthening our downtown economy. These strategies are not one-size-fits-all, they're shaped by local data, community input, and real-world conditions. Each strategy is carried out through activities in the Main Street America four-point approach, which is each of our four councils: design, economic vitality, organization, and promotions and marketing. This framework ensures we are addressing downtown's physical, social, and economic needs in a well-rounded and sustainable way. And importantly, we review and refine these strategies annually to keep our work relevant and responsive. A major initiative is improving the perception of downtown and changing the narrative. We are actively working to highlight the positives and opportunities that exist, countering outdated perceptions and replacing them with pride and positivity. We are also focused on sustaining our organizational momentum, we're strengthening the foundation of Main Street Waterloo itself, ensuring we have resources, leadership, and partnerships needed to continue the work we're doing for years to come. We are also working to bring the community together around shared message: "This is your downtown Waterloo." We want every resident, a business owner, and visitor to feel connected to downtown's growth and see themselves in its success. Our transformation strategies aren't just plans, they're a promise, a promise to keep moving forward together. So digging a little bit deeper into our first transformation strategy, changing the narrative isn't just about shifting how people see downtown, it's about transforming how they feel about downtown. We are actively working to challenge outdated stereotypes and move the noise, move beyond the noise and negativity. Through targeted storytelling, inclusive events, and collaborative partnerships, we're lifting up the voices and faces that reflect the real downtown. Our goal is to make sure people know, don't just know what is happening, they understand why it matters. Some of the initiatives have been business spotlight videos that are averaging two, two-point-eight thousand views with a lot of shares and comments to highlight and showcase each of the business owners and why they're in downtown. This means capturing and sharing that downtown is a place with opportunity, connection, and community. We are embracing the strategic goal tried directly to economic impact because when the perception of downtown improves, so does investment, foot traffic, and business success. Downtown isn't just building blocks, it's made of people, and entrepreneurs chasing their passions, families creating lasting memories, friends gathering, and artists expressing. Downtown is a place that celebrates people, purpose, and possibility, and the story we're telling reflects that. Building momentum is another one of our transformation strategies. Or, sorry, building momentum is one thing, but sustaining it is where the real challenge and opportunity lie. We are laying the groundwork now to ensure our progress continues well into the future. Sustaining our momentum means growing our team. We're excited to, as I mentioned, have two actual full-time staff people, and she is doing an amazing job, and it's helping us be able to do more as an organization. As demands increase, we recognize the need to add to staff capacity and have built out an internship program that can offer hands-on experience while expanding our reach as an organization. People are, people is power and is a key to our organization. One of our goals is focused on volunteer recruitment, and we were thrilled to recruit a hundred and twenty-one new volunteers in twenty twenty-four, bringing fresh energy, new skills, and strong community ties. A big part of our goal is to diversify our revenue streams, so we're not relying only on hosting events. We've also, we've been exploring grants through this, and we were able to increase our fundraising efforts by ninety percent in twenty twenty-four. Through initiatives like Dinner Across the Bridge and an end-of-the-year fifty-fifty raffle, diversifying our revenue streams is helping us to develop long-term financial plans, align our budget with strategic goals, and not just annual needs. We're not just planning for the next event, we are planning for the next decade. By investing in people, systems, and sustainability, we're making sure Main Street Waterloo is built to last. And our third transformation strategy focuses on community unity. Because a strong downtown is one where everyone feels, everyone feels seen, welcomed, and valued. We are designing inclusive programming that reflects community, welcoming people of all backgrounds, cultures, and experiences. We believe in participatory decision-making, not just hosting events for the community, but working with the community. We are listening, we are learning, and we are inviting more voices into the conversation. A powerful symbol of this work is the Diversity is Our Strength mural that was recently reinstalled, renewing our commitment to recognize the many voices, backgrounds, and experiences that make our community unique. The mural is a reflection of who we are as a community, and it's a visual reminder that we are strongest when we support one another. It reminds us how important it is to recognize and appreciate the different cultures, perspectives, and traditions that make up our daily lives. Our work helps ensure downtown Waterloo is not only functional, but also beautiful, safe, and inviting. The Design Council focuses on physical improvements, the things people see, feel, and experience as they move through our downtown. Since becoming a Main Street community in nineteen ninety-six, there has been almost a hundred and forty-nine million dollars of private investment into the district. Three hundred and eighteen buildings have been rehabilitated, with seventeen of those just being completed between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four. Main Street Waterloo also supported the Martin Flats Project in securing a challenge grant, receiving funds to complete a significant rehabilitation project that blends preservation and housing. We hosted our annual spring cleanup day recently, Main Street Sweep, with twenty-two volunteers picking up ninety-seven bags of trash and about twenty-four bags of yard waste, which was approximately three thousand five hundred pounds of waste that we picked up. Tour de Louvre was also recently hosted in collaboration with the Historic Preservation Commission, inviting the public to learn what was once in downtown and how far we have come over the years. Seasonal flowers, holiday decor, public art, and lighting all continue to enhance our streetscapes in downtown year-round. The projects, big or small, make a powerful collective impact. Thanks to our Design Council, Waterloo is not just improving, it's transforming into a place that reflects the pride, creativity, and commitment to our community. Our Economic Vitality Council is focused on building strong and resilient downtown economy. We're identifying new opportunities, activating underutilized spaces, and finding modern uses for historic, commercial buildings, all while stimulating the private investment. Since becoming a community in nineteen ninety-six, we have netted two hundred and forty-nine new businesses, creating seven hundred and twelve new jobs just in our downtown district. We have two more that will be opening by the end of summer, one kind of secretly had a soft opening yesterday, so that one's coming very soon. We strengthen support for local businesses through quarterly downtown business meetings, as well as our Brews and Business, which is monthly, and Shop Downtown Saturdays marketing campaign throughout the year, and our support local cash mobs. We've been averaging about forty people at each of those cash mobs, with seventy percent of them saying that is the first time they have visited those businesses. So those cash mobs take place the last Tuesday of each month, the fourth Tuesday of each month, bringing intentional traffic into the downtown businesses. The Downtown Impact Grant is one of our key tools to help small businesses grow. Our first grant was awarded in twenty twenty-two to Gray Lane Yoga, they completed their project in twenty twenty-three. Through twenty twenty-three, they saw forty percent growth in their business and expanded and added a second building workout space to their business in twenty twenty-four. Our second grant was awarded to Tri-Bye Bakery, funding cold storage delivery vehicle and helping them expand delivery reach while raising awareness that they have a downtown storefront where you can come get a pie or a pie shake any day of the week. You don't have to go shopping and buy one at the grocery store. Our third grant will be, the applications will open in September, and will be awarded before the end of this year. We are hosting a golf tournament on June seventeenth, and that is how we fund the grant project, when we have a goal of raising ten thousand dollars for the golf tournament for our grant this year. Every business we support, every job we help create, and every storefront we activate brings us closer to a downtown that's thriving, inclusive, and full of opportunity. Our Organization Council is the foundation of everything we do. It brings partners from all parts of the community, businesses, nonprofits, residents, and city leaders to create a shared vision for downtown. By fostering the collaboration and ensuring transparency, we are building financial stability. And the Organization Council keeps the entire program grounded and growing. Since becoming a Main Street community, we've seen ninety, almost ninety-eight thousand total volunteer hours, and volunteers are essential to our success. So in twenty twenty-four, Lori Eberhart was named our Volunteer of the Year, and recently this year, Nick Hedrick was honored with a Mayor's Volunteer Award, which was exciting. Our current strategic plan has the goal set of seventy-five new volunteers per year over the next three years, and as I mentioned, we were really excited to welcome a hundred and twenty-one new ones. One of our key transformation strategies is to diversify our revenue streams, and we were able to see that increase with ninety percent increase in fundraising. We're really working on telling our story. We successfully created our second annual report and are proud to be producing one-page summaries to help market our impact with stakeholders easier. The work of our Organization Council ensures Main Street Waterloo isn't just thriving today, but is prepared, supported, and positioned for success in the future. The Promotions and Marketing Council tell the story of downtown, positioning it as a center of commerce, culture, and community life for both residents and visitors. The council is made up of creative, energetic, and organized individuals with a passion about downtown. We host more than thirty events every year, bringing life throughout every season, and we're attracting approximately thirty-two thousand people with just our events that we host, which is more than five hundred volunteers and more than two thousand volunteer hours each year, which is generating an estimated one-point-nine million dollars in economic impact just from the events that Main Street hosts. We're intentional with every event, making sure each one drives business traffic, community engagement, and positive lasting experiences. From parades to pop-ups, concerts to markets, our events are more than just fun, they're powerful tools that we're using to promote downtown's vibrancy and ensure everyone feels welcome in downtown. Dinner Across the Bridge was a powerful celebration of connection and community. Last year, we hosted this for the first time, and we were able to sell out all three hundred tickets, showing just how much the community values coming together in meaningful ways. The event brought people from both sides of the river to sit together, share a meal, and remind us that we are one community. We're planning to host Dinner Across the Bridge every even-numbered year moving forward, giving us time to thoughtfully plan and make each one more impactful. On odd numbers years like this year, we will be hosting Notes of the District, which is a more formal annual event or biennial event, to celebrate our partners, highlight successes, and recognize outstanding contributions. Together, these two alternating events will allow us to celebrate community in different but equally meaningful ways while keeping our focus on connection, recognition, connection and recognition. At Main Street Waterloo, we believe that diversity is not just something to be celebrated, it's one of our greatest strengths. The Diversity is Our Strength mural is more than just a piece of public art, it's a statement of belonging, a reminder that everyone has a place here and that downtown is for all. Because when we bring our full community together, we honor every story, every background, and every neighbor, we all grow stronger. We were honored to welcome Debbie Durham, the Director of the Iowa Economic Development Authority and Iowa Finance Authority to downtown Waterloo just last week. During her visit, she toured our district, met with business owners, and saw firsthand the momentum that we are building downtown. She was genuinely impressed by the level of activity and investment and collaboration happening. From historic preservation projects to business development efforts and public art installations, Debbie saw we're not just talking about revitalization, we are actively making it happen. She shared she can't wait to come back in September when we host the Main Street Iowa Fall Training. Hosting the statewide training is not only an honor, it's a chance to showcase our community to Main Street leaders from across Iowa and highlight what makes downtown Waterloo unique, welcoming, and full of opportunity. We're excited to roll out the red carpet this fall and the others see what Debbie saw, downtown that is energized, united, and ready for the future. Thank you again for the opportunity to share our progress. As you've seen, downtown Waterloo is more than just buildings and businesses, it's a place of connection, creativity, and community. From historic preservation and economic development and to community unity and event programming, our momentum is strong. Our strategies are intentional, and our impact is growing. We are proud of what we have accomplished, but even more excited for what's ahead. We invite you to continue walking alongside us, supporting the projects and partnerships, and making a difference downtown. Together, we're building a downtown that reflects the pride that we all have for our community.
Thank you. Right, it is a great presentation. It is four-thirty-five, we're a couple minutes over, but council, any quick questions? My portion on the agenda, unless you guys have a ton of questions for me, is very short, we're just following state law. But any questions for Jessica right now? Jessica, I think one of the things really quickly you want, the Brews, the Brews-
Brews and Business?
Brews and Business and some of the cash mobs. You, you want us to kind of coordinate with city council too, so we can get some members out there to support as well, right?
Yeah, we would definitely love to have members of city council attend those. They are the, well, the Brews and Business are the third Tuesday of every month, and they alternate between coffee and happy hour to help people's schedules. And then the Support Local Cash Mobs are the fourth Tuesday of every month, and we are kind of rotating between coffee, lunch, and dinner after work.
And I'll do a little bit better getting information out too as well. So thank you for the incredible presentation, been able to see your work here, but also see your interaction with people on a national level at the National Main Street Conference as well. It was pretty awesome to have the Mayor of Philadelphia shout out the Diversity is Our Strength mural and comment on our local community as well, all the way there. So you guys do a tremendous job, your staffing is low, but your impact overall throughout our community is incredible. So on behalf of myself and the city council, we want to thank you for all of your tremendous efforts moving us forward downtown, so thank you.
Yeah, Jess.
All right, next up, we have an update from Grove Cedar Valley, so.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some updates. We've had a big year at Grove Cedar Valley, and we've accomplished a lot of really exciting things. I've got some team members with me today, Lisa Scooball, Adrian Miller, and Stephanie Detweiler. They're going to provide updates on the work that we're doing in economic development, both abroad and across the country as we're going out to try and recruit new businesses, as well as here locally, how we're supporting our local business community here in Waterloo. And then we're going to talk, Stephanie's going to provide some updates on the work that we're doing relative to talent and workforce. So with that, I will let them go ahead and get started, and we'll save some time for questions.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Mayor, it's good that you made it back from Washington, D.C., we both did, safe and sound. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the economic development efforts. Grove Cedar Valley is leading on behalf of the City of Waterloo. Since our last report, Grove Cedar Valley has actively pursued new business growth, as Katie said, and investment opportunities. Since December, we've engaged with eighteen new prospects for Waterloo. We can, that is from the last, the previous time we reported, which was eleven. And I'd like to contribute that to us adding additional staff so I can focus in on this area. We continue to find that in-person engagement is the most effective way to connect with companies. That's why we lead generation, that's why we do Lead Generation trips, and they remain a key part of our strategy for business recruitment. Like any sales process, we begin with a wide funnel, reaching out to hundreds of companies and narrowing that down to those with serious interest in our area. For example, our West Coast Lead Generation trip began with a list of one thousand and fifty-one companies, which were selected based on growth patterns, industry, news, and digital research. Our outreach is conducted by phone and email primarily, with an average of five contacted attempts per company, targeting C-level executives to determine three things: whether they have expansion plans, whether they would consider Iowa for an expansion if yes, and three, whether they'd be open to an in-person or virtual meeting. This effort resulted in five new business opportunities out of the initial outreach. We had resolved records, as you will see there, which includes dead ends like wrong numbers and non-relevant subsidiaries. Our East Coast trip followed a similar approach, starting with a list of one thousand five hundred and forty-eight companies and resulting in four new business opportunities, two of which are at exploring visits due to immediate expansion needs. This year, we also started pairing Lead Generation trips with meetings with site selectors, the professionals who advise companies on where to expand. It's part of our marketing-to-the-marketer strategy. We're currently finalizing an itinerary to host three of sixty-six site selection consultants here in the Cedar Valley from September ninth through the eleventh. Their visit will help us assess our competitiveness for both domestic and international business attraction. They will evaluate our sites, incentives, tax structure, workforce, and overall quality of life. So by later this month, you will receive a "Save the Date" email, and we hope you'll be able to join us in what we expect to be a valuable and engaging conversation about Waterloo's future competitiveness and attracting new businesses. Last month, we also participated in Select USA Investment Summit, exhibiting along with Iowa Economic Development Authority. And currently, the state is reviewing the booth leads they received overall. But for us, we had five individual one-on-one meetings, that's up from four from the previous year. And this year, we're pleased that Mayor Hart could join us for that. While overall attendance felt smaller, the quality of discussion with international companies was strong, with a clear interest in U.S. expansion. Next week, we're closing our fiscal year with the Lead Generation trip to the Netherlands, where we already have six meetings lined up with companies considering U.S. expansion in their future, and we have two of them in a holding pattern, seeing if we can also schedule those appointments as well next week. As we move into the new fiscal year beginning July first, we plan to place a greater emphasis on foreign direct investment, and we look forward to partnering with city staff as we continue to promote the Cedar Valley and Waterloo on the global stage. Once our budget is approved by Grove Cedar Valley's Board of Directors next month, we'll be able to share more details about those plans and timeline for you so you can make some planning decisions for next fiscal year to join us on some of those Lead Generation trips. For now, should we wait till questions at the end, Mayor, or can fill them now?
Yeah, let's make sure everyone gets through the presentation. I just asked council to write down any thoughts you may have, but let's get through the presentation so we can hear the information, then we'll follow up with questions.
Okay, well now I'll just switch it over to Adrian to talk about her BRE effort.
Don't leave. All right, thank you.
Katie won't let me.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. Adrian Miller, Director of Business Services and Advocacy for Grove Cedar Valley, good to see everybody. Really, my purpose here at Grove Cedar Valley is to work with existing businesses to see- Really, my purpose here at Grow Cedar Valley is to work with existing businesses, to see, to just ensure that they have the resources that they need to be successful. Historically, we're really kind of focused on manufacturers throughout the Cedar Valley, but I've actually expanded that to open up and visit with any businesses throughout the Cedar Valley. So I've visited with those large manufacturers throughout the Cedar Valley, but also actually visited with a couple of in-house, at-home businesses that really want to get out there and get their businesses known throughout the Cedar Valley as well. So really opening that up to all sorts of businesses. Our primary goal with this is to provide assistance and to them with any needs that they might have, like incentive opportunities, workforce needs, or any kind of even networking opportunities, like I noted before. Since our last meeting, I believe that was in late November, maybe early December, we've actually visited with additional 41 businesses throughout the Cedar Valley, bringing our total up to 55 visits completed or scheduled so far this fiscal year. Thirty-two of those have been within Waterloo, and numerous of those are actually looking to expand within the next three to five years, and so we've been working with city staff on that, just kind of preparing for that potential, or those potential expansions of businesses. Some trends that we're seeing within these businesses too, obviously, I don't think I really need to tell you this, there's been a little bit of a slowdown in the egg economy. So seeing a lot of trends with that, but overall, there has been a very positive outlook from all of the manufacturers that we've visited with. They're pretty used to the ebbs and flows of the egg economy, so they definitely have a positive outlook and foresee things going up in the near future. Despite that, workforce seems to be actually pretty steady across all sectors. Specialized positions still tend to be a little tricky to find employees for, but they're making it work and they're figuring that out, but overall, workforce has actually been pretty stable for everybody. Tariffs is one thing that I've actually been bringing up, you know, the last probably four or five months at least. We started seeing or hearing some additional costs to our employers around the beginning of March is when they started seeing up to about a 40% rise in their costs. So they have to actually push that on to, you know, the customers and whatnot. So there's a lot of unknowns with the tariffs as well, so that's just kind of an ebb and flow thing that we're kind of feeling out and watching as we go. So still asking all the employees about that, our employers about that, and seeing if there's anything that we might be able to assist with any way or shape or form. And all of these findings that we're actually, when we go out to visit these businesses, we actually submit all of this information to the Iowa Economic Development Authority as well. They do what they call a BRE Trends kind of survey from across the state, just to see if there's anything that needs to be adjusted at the state level. So this year, at the legislative level, they actually updated a bunch of the state tax credit programs with the IEDA, and that was partially in what they're finding, came from what they're finding within these BRE visits from across the state. We're one of about 15 communities that actually submit these surveys, so I'd like to think we have a okay voice at the state level in regards to what's happening in business trends today. Transitioning over to the advocacy part of my position too, a little bit newer to that with my role, but the Grow Cedar Valley does have a legislative priority focusing on talent development, economic development, education. We really have been working on strengthening our relationships at the state level with legislators, with state officials, and organizations like the IEDA, the Iowa Association of Business and Industry, and even Professional Developers of Iowa. We've had a few visits from these organizations in the past few months, and we actually have a few more upcoming in the rest of the year, so kind of be on the lookout of when you might see some invites on their visits as well. These visits really just want to highlight the businesses and growth happening throughout the Cedar Valley. So this is a good way to get the Cedar Valley on their radar, get a little bit more spotlight on the businesses and what's all happening within the Cedar Valley too. So for advocacy as well, we do have a number of different events throughout the year. We have Friday forums where we bring in legislators during the Iowa Legislative Session to discuss what's going on during that time or during that moment of session. So far, we've had seventy, or we've had seven Friday forums with a total of over 230 attendees to those. We have one more coming up this June 13th with Dustin Miller. He's with the CWL Group out of Des Moines. He is actually a lobbyist that is in the Capitol day in, day out. So he has a lot of good insights. He works with a lot of private and public groups from across the state as representatives. So he has a lot of really good insight, working with legislators every single day of what kind of happened this past session, and then also might be able to give us some insights on what we'll be seeing for next session as well. We have also a pre-legislative reception that we held in December, and that had a total of 76 attendees as well. That one is basically, we bring in all of the legislators from the Black Hawk County area, and they will be able to give us an update on what they're seeing pre-legislatively, what they might be able to tell us, what we might be able to see coming that session. And then, just coming up this next fiscal year, what you might be seeing from myself, from the business standpoint and advocacy standpoint, we are planning on visiting at least 60 visits, or businesses, throughout the region this year. And then we are going to start facilitating some quarterly EDO updates, roundtables, that will include city officials or city economic development staff, utility partners, and Grow Cedar Valley, just so we're all on the same page and all are in the know of what's going on economic development-wise within the Cedar Valley. We are also looking at doing some corporate headquarter visits, so we're going to look at all the headquarters throughout the Cedar Valley, where they're located, and see if we can do some major headquarter visits as well from some of our businesses. You'll see some more marketing on business visits and advocacy for Grow Cedar Valley as well. This is going to be not only what's happening, but also just some literature on how to, what does this mean, what does that mean, kind of thing. So I think we have one coming out soon about how to even just talk to legislators, simple things like that, that sometimes that can be intimidating, need a little bit of guidance on that. So a lot of literature like that coming out too. And then also, last but not least, we'll have some additional opportunities to get in front of state legislators and different organizations throughout the year too. So like I said, be on the lookout. There will be some dates coming up throughout the next several months about some upcoming events, and we look forward to hopefully seeing you there. I will turn it over to Stephanie.
Good afternoon. Stephanie Detweiler, Director of Talent and Workforce for Grow Cedar Valley. I have a few exciting initiatives that I want to share with you tonight. The first one I wanted to mention is our Cedar Valley Intern Connect Event, our program. So last year was our first year doing it. We had, the goal of it's really to connect interns that are interning at our Cedar Valley businesses over the summer, connect them with the Cedar Valley, so they feel like they have a better idea of how great it is to live here, connect them with other interns in the area too, to make, to build relationships. So last year was our first year. We had 30 participants in the Intern Connect Program, and 100% of them said that they felt more connected to the Cedar Valley after going through that program, so it was very successful. We also heard really great feedback from the businesses that sent their interns, and also from the interns themselves. So this year, we have, so far, we have 32 people signed up, 32 interns signed up, that represent 19 different businesses across the Cedar Valley. And of those 19, 11 of them are businesses that sent them last year, so you can tell that they see the value in the program, so that's good that we're getting repeat businesses sending them to this program. This year, we did something a little different. We actually partnered with UNI's Nonprofit Leadership Alliance students. They were reaching out to nonprofits to get projects for their second semester class, and so we had them help kind of come up with some of the programming or get feedback from them on ideas. So that was kind of fun too, because they're basically our target audience, interns. And so we got some feedback from them on how to program, how to make the program this year. So this year, we, like I said, we have 32 signed up, and there's still some time. It's next week on Tuesday is the first session, so we anticipate a few more trickling in. Most of the program will be the same as last year, with just a few minor tweaks. The mayors actually, Mayor Hart's not here right now, but they were, one of the rave reviews, having Mayor Hart and Mayor Laudek come and talk to the interns, they got great feedback. So they're coming back again on Tuesday to share just insight with them too, so we're excited about that. We're adding a couple fun things this year. We're adding a Cedar Valley bucket list, create their own Cedar Valley bucket list to the program. So on that first day, they're going to create their own bucket list of things that they need to do and experience here in the Cedar Valley while they're here for the summer. So we're excited about that. It's next Tuesday, and then one in July are the two sessions. The other initiative that I wanted to talk about is our Cedar Valley Young Professionals. So in January this year is when we really started that up. The mission of CVYP is to connect, engage, and empower young professionals across the Cedar Valley through professional development, networking, and community involvement. And so there's really been a couple core programs that we've done within that. One of them is a Wake Up YP event that we've had a couple so far. One was with Amy Weenans, and the others that was with the mayors again, and also got rave reviews from them. But it's just a professional development opportunity for our young professionals in the community. And then the other thing that we've been doing is social and networking events for them to build relationships with other young professionals and, you know, expand in their network. So far, we've had about 274 young professionals attending five events that we've had since January, so really good success, and we're continuing to gain momentum. We believe it's really important to have the young professional programming, you know, really for our talent attraction pipeline, to make sure that, you know, we're getting the pipeline that our businesses need by having young professionals here in the community. So it's starting July 1st, it will be membership-based, so membership is available to anybody. They don't have to be a Grow Cedar Valley investor. And the cost for non-Grow Cedar Valley investors, if they're tied to a company, would be $90, and then $75 for GVC members, so. And we do continue to have an advisory council of young professionals that's kind of advising our work and making sure that, you know, we're really thinking through what young professionals are looking for. So it's been a really good success. The last thing I wanted to talk about is our Cedar Valley Population Study, and I believe I mentioned it the last time I was here, but just to kind of bring everybody to the same point again. So at the beginning of our fiscal year, or like last year, April timeframe, one of the things that we determined that we wanted to do for our strategic plan was to really look at the population of the Cedar Valley, because according to a data source that we subscribe to called Lightcast, it's anticipated that the Cedar Valley's population will be continuing to decline over the next five years. And when we looked at it compared to other metros in Iowa, and other metros are growing where we're declining. And when we look at, we're looking at the MSA for the Cedar Valley, so that's Blackhawk, Bremner, and Grundy Counties. So for Grow Cedar Valley, we really took a step back and tried to figure out what can we do to change this trajectory. And so the thing that we decided was that we would hire a consulting firm to kind of help us come up with an action plan of how we can do that. So we comprised a committee of stakeholders, about 23 stakeholders from across the community. Noel is one on our committee, as well as people from Cedar Falls, all over the, really all over the community, business leaders, community leaders. And in October, we defined what the objective and the scope was of this study with the stakeholders. And then in January, we issued an RFP, and we got, we got 15 strong proposals from consulting firms. We selected five to interview and had a small interviewing team. Also Noel was a part of that. And of those five, we decided to go with one called Civic Soul out of Austin, Texas. And so what really set them apart from the other consultants was that, I mentioned that Lightcast that we subscribe to, they actually have a partnership with Lightcast, and so that will be a part of this study. So it'll kind of help with the sustainability, that we'll be able to refer back to that data over time to see kind of how we're measuring progress. And then the other thing was that they were really adamant about involving the stakeholders in the study and in the action plan that comes out of it. So it's not something that's just like done and handed to us to try to implement in our community. They're involving the entire community of coming up with this action plan. So that was really, really important to us, and that's why we chose them. So kind of next steps, right now, they are planning on visiting the Cedar Valley. That'll be their first time visiting the community, June 24th to 26th. And so I'm in the process of setting up roundtables for that week, and I will be asking all of you to join a roundtable, all of the council members. So council members in Waterloo and Cedar Falls, city leadership, county leadership will be in one of the roundtables. There'll be other, there's 12 different topics for roundtables, like such as manufacturing, since it's like our key industry, education and training, workforce, nonprofits. I can't think of all of them off, housing, tourism, hospitality. So those are kind of all the different topics that we'll have roundtables for, but like I said, one of them will be region leadership, and I would love for any of you that are able to participate to come. So you'll be seeing an email from me in the next few days for that. I think that's it for me.
All right, thank you.
I think one other interesting thing to share is ultimately, this population study is going to lead us to an implementation plan. And I think what we're excited about is having an action plan for how we go about addressing population decline here in the Cedar Valley. And part of the reason we had so many shareholders involved early is because we believe that engagement is important to that process. So our hope is that by engaging people early in this process, when those recommendations do come out in November, we'll have a group of engaged people that are excited to work together to reverse the population trend here in the Cedar Valley. So that is just one of several exciting things we have coming up in the next year. I think if we talk broadly about what we look forward to in the next fiscal year for Grow Cedar Valley, we're anticipating a much stronger and more aggressive approach to our economic development. You already heard Adrian talk about the fact that she's got a goal of 60 BRE visits here in the Cedar Valley. We are taking a much more aggressive approach to how many external business development trips we're going to take. And more than that, we're really working to hone our strategy, so that, as Jess said earlier, it's all about storytelling, and we want to make sure that we're telling the Cedar Valley story well, highlighting the things that make us a great community for businesses to invest in. So I just want to close by saying thank you. We're grateful for the support of the City of Waterloo from all of you. We consider it an honor to be able to go out and represent the community, both externally and internally, through our, through our different community development events, through our ribbon cuttings, and through the different things that we get to host and participate in. So thank you for being a partner. We're looking forward to participating in my Waterloo Days this upcoming weekend. We will have, we'll have a group walking in the parade. We have committed to buying about three times more candy than we bought last year, because nobody wants to run out of candy on the parade route. So we're excited about that and looking forward to participating in the festivities this weekend. So grateful to be able to work with you, grateful to be able to represent the City of Waterloo in all that we do. So thank you. We'll open up for questions.
Thank you. Questions, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Just one clarification about the roundtables. When was that timeline of? Roundtables in Waterloo? June 24th?
June 24th.
I think it's in the afternoon for the region.
Okay. And then it was mentioned on the EDO updates. What would be that forum, and then how often was that? I think Adrian was talking about that.
The-
Adrian-
The EDO forum. They would be quarterly, and it would actually be just city staff, economic development staff, economic development staff from Grow Cedar Valley, and then staff from supporting utilities as well, just so we're all updated and up to date on everything that everybody's got going on. We're all pretty busy, so want to stay on the same page.
Thank you.
Sir?
In regards to the Civic Soul that you selected to help with the action plan, is that correct?
Yes.
How did you find that, that group? And did they have a track record, a proven track record? Or how did you evaluate which one to pick? Because you said you had quite a few to pick from.
We did, yeah. So we went through an RFP process. So we drafted, with some assistance from UNI's Institute for Decision Making, we drafted a request for proposal. We sent that out through a variety of different places. The International Economic Development Association was one of those. So through that process of soliciting RFPs, we got 15 different responses. From there, we had a group that reviewed all of the proposals and developed a shortlist based on a grading matrix, and then narrowed that down to five. We used- We used a a group of steering committee members to then participate in the interview process and again utilized a matrix for um assessing the different consultants that we interviewed um based on lots of different things like their experience with communities similar to ours. As well as their their approach to the project, what how they were gonna essentially help us. Um, and ultimately through that process made the decision to work with Civic Soul.
And they do have a track record of success?
They do, yep, yep. They've got several several different projects uh for communities just like ours that they've helped. We did, we we also checked references after the process before um developing contracts just to make sure that um their references spoke highly of them, which they did.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, yes, very aggressive uh past year, uh, and just wanted to say Lisa did an incredible job uh in DC at the Select USA uh Conference. There were a couple folks that we may have met with and uh kind of uh didn't know where they were headed at and she was able to find some common ground, generate uh some incredible leads and to also uh make sure that they know the Cedar Valley's on the map, so I thought she did an incredible job. So to everyone on your entire team, uh, thank you so much. We appreciate you. And uh, let's double up what we did this year, next year, so thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, um, number, uh, the next item on the discussion is uh we have to have a uh work session prior, but we had originally committed to do um fireworks uh fourth and fifth. Uh, we partner with Cedar Falls so that we can have some consistency, so one group wouldn't go to Cedar Falls on this day, they wouldn't come here on this day. And so finally the state uh after several years has finally come out with some language uh on um stating that you cannot have a complete ban on fireworks. Um, but fireworks can be displayed legally no matter where you're at uh July third and fourth. Uh, and those timeframes are also listed. Uh, we had already, like I said, prior to this, voted to do the fourth and the fifth, uh, so I'm asking council, we have to comply with state law. But um, to do the third, fourth, and fifth, since we've already promoted it, but for the last couple months that it would be on the fifth, so. That's what that's about, but state law is the third and fourth, and it's also December thirty-first as well. So no matter what we do, uh, the following years, those are legal days that the um state legislature has. Uh, of course, as we all found out, the way we do it, one time you may have, uh, the fourth may be on a Sunday or it may be on a Saturday, or it could be on a specific day. And so that's where, you know, if it was close to the weekend, we always try to do that cause we know folks have to get up and work uh the next day, so it's uh complying with state law and from what we've already uh told the city Waterloo and Cedar Falls on that date of the fifth, so. Uh, anyone questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Whoever. I uh, I don't, I don't really re- see how well advertised the fifth was uh outside of just in our minutes. If the state wants to take away home rule, and 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 they seem to do a really good job of that each and every year, taking away things that we should be able to make decisions on. That as far as I'm concerned, if the state says the third, fourth, and thirty-first, that's what we give them. And and uh, I get it, I I get enough complaints on fireworks and I wish the the chief was here because I'd like to talk about enforcement before we we set this thing in motion also to see what we're gonna have for enforcement, but. I just feel like if the state legislature wants to take away our decision-making abilities, then if the people are upset that they can't have fireworks on the fifth, talk to your state legislature, not talk, don't talk to us because they're the ones that are taking it away from you. Thank you.
Mr. Childs?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I was essentially gonna say the same thing, so I just second what you just said, Mr. Boson.
So no, no fifth?
No fifth.
That's just my opinion, yeah.
I I would agree with that as well. Two days is plenty.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I wish there was a way that we could just say the fourth and the fifth since Fridays and Saturday would be a weekend, but the third is gonna be problematic cause it's Thursday.
So that's why I tried to take it out the additional day cause it was Saturday, but it's up to council, majority of council, what you wanna do. Mr. Nichols, anything?
Yeah, I I agree with the previous two council people. If that's what the state wants to do and not allow us to. You know, if they want, if they wanna have that that way, let's just, let's do it that way and have it be the third and the fourth and if they decide to change their minds, they'll change their minds.
Right. Well, I think they did it that way so they can maintain that the people that are selling fireworks and you can purchase them, so of course it's open for what fifteen, twenty days or whatever it is, so. Uh, but they're making sure that no matter what we do, cities can't have a full ban uh on fireworks, so um, that's coming back next week. So I'm hearing the majority say to comply with the state law. I just don't like telling people since we started that we have the fifth and then now we changed that from the weekend, but it's up to what council wants, so we'll put the third and fourth.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Everyone's done. And and I, 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 far be it for me to figure out what's in some legislature's minds, but um, I, I, when you talk, Ms. Creighton Smith about about the third, I, I think their their mindset, if I can read into some of their minds, is that most people aren't working the fourth, so if you have fireworks going off the night of the third and then you got the night of the fourth, but the problem is, is that you do the third and the fourth and it falls on a, on a weekday, you're all working that next day and those fireworks going off till eleven o'clock.
They're gonna shoot them off on Saturday anyway.
And that's why I wish the chief was here so we could talk about enforcement.
Yeah, well.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, if I just one last comment, um, since we already publicized the fifth, I don't see how we cannot um have it on the fifth. We've already publicized it. Um, so, well, I think we're just gonna have to go with the third, fourth, and fifth. That would be my recommendation because people could come back and say, you said the fifth.
Was it on our website? I don't remember seeing it.
We, we did a joint um resolution with the City of Cedar Falls that both the City of Cedar Falls and Waterloo uh would be the fourth and the fifth, so that we had discussions, Danny and I, and that's how we came up uh with the fourth and fifth so that we can have some consistency. So I spoke with him a little while ago and the comment was, okay, we'll keep the fifth since it's the weekend. So I, like I said, it's, it's up to council what the majority of council wants. Um, but uh, you know, so we're gonna have police go around and enforce this on a Saturday and we know they're gonna shoot off fireworks on a Saturday, so. Yes, ma'am.
And especially if they already, if they already saw that we approved the third, fourth, and fifth, and now we're going back saying, don't do the fifth.
So.
So, I mean, it's like we're gonna be enforcing something that we told them was okay and now it's not okay.
So we got two, fourth and, we got two, three, four, and five, and we have four, um, four, third and fourth.
So as far as the fourth and the fif- or at least the fifth, since it's not a complete ban, we would still be okay to to have the fifth, just next year, we can't have the fifth.
Next year, I'm just trying to get through this year because this state change actually came up after we had already set our times because um, the state legislature with us, we have to, we have to let our folks know when uh to do things. So we had already set these dates. They came back and said now that these are the days. And I think it's particularly for places that have a complete ban. And so they have a complete ban, so now they're making sure that the folks that are selling fireworks has an incredible opportunity to be able to sell them by mandating that the third and fourth uh be those days and the thirty-first, December thirty-first. My goal was to get us through this year because we've already said the fourth and fifth. So that's why I came back and said three, four, and five just to get us through this year. Then next year, we just leave it alone because it's the third and the fourth. And regardless if it's a Tuesday or Monday or whenever it is, it is what it is because the state has stepped in and said you have to do it on these. I only added the fifth because we've already went in a joint uh conversation with our neighbors to to do it, so. So. So, well, I can't leave it cause I don't want it to come and get voted on. I need it, so I'm hearing four, two, and no changes. So we'll bring it back for the third and the fourth and thirty-first. All right, anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Are you running this?
Um. Right here.
Oh, okay. I didn't know.
I'm right here. Okay. All right, Leanne, are you ready?
I am.
Okay, uh, welcome everybody to the Waterloo City Council Finance Meeting. Roll call please.
Mr. Voice.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
All right, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, um, as well as approval of the minutes of the May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five Finance Committee meeting minutes as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First up, we have travel requests.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Childs.
I move to approve the following travel request, um, to determine the new Housing Coordinator Housing Choice Voucher Specialist. And that is for Nan McKay Housing Choice Voucher Specialist Certification. It's a webinar from June twenty-third to the twenty-seventh, amount not to exceed one thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Uh, Lieutenant Rob Camrata, that is for Enhanced Force Investigation Certification Course in Waukees from July twenty-first to the twenty-fourth, not to exceed one thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars. Jesse Garrity, Collections Project Director, Brad Manahol, Operations Director, and Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager for the W E F T E C Conference in Chicago uh from September twenty-seventh to October first with the amount not to exceed five thousand four hundred eighty dollars and seventy cents. Bridget Wood, Finance Director and Kim Bar, Assistant Finance Director, Understanding Government Compensation and Payroll Webinar from July twenty-ninth to the thirty-first, amount not to exceed seven hundred dollars. Bridget Wood, Finance Director and Kim Bar, Assistant Finance Director, Evaluating Internal Controls Webinar August twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth, amount not to exceed six hundred fifty dollars. Bridget Wood, Finance Director and Kim Bar, Assistant Finance Director, Managing Managing Financial Distress Webinar October fourteenth to the sixteenth, amount not to exceed five hundred dollars. Bridget Wood, Finance Director and Kim Bar, Assistant Finance Director, Best Practices and Strategies for Public Investing Webinar October seventh and ninth, amount not to exceed seven hundred dollars. Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, Twenty-Twenty-Five National Brownfords Training Conference in Chicago, Illinois from August fifth to the eighth, amount not to exceed two thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Uh, Kayden Peverill, FF Firefighter Paramedic, Austin Forst uh Firefighter Paramedic, Jacob Eggleson, Firefighter Paramedic, and Grant Irvine uh Fire Per- Paramedic for the Critical Care Paramedic Class at Hawkeye Community College uh from June second to August twenty-eight, amount not to exceed one thousand six hundred dollars. Detective Jeremy Berryman and Detective Luke Lemary uh CTK Interview and Interrogation Course in Ankeny from July fifteenth to the seventeenth, amount not to exceed one thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars. And Officer Zach De Priest, Officer Lucas De Priest, uh Cedar Rapids Police Academy Level One Certification School in Cedar Rapids and from June second to October third, amount not to exceed eight thousand ninety-four dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have the preauthorization to expend over two thousand five hundred dollars.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Nichols.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following preauthorizations to expend over two thousand five hundred dollars. First is engineering in the amount of six thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars, and that's for the Iowa Stormwater Education Partnership. ISWEP Twenty-Twenty-Five Membership Dues. Next is for finance in the amount of one hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents. And that is for expenditure for annual maintenance fees for financial human resources and community development software with Tyler Technologies. Next is for finance in the amount of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars plus one thousand two hundred fifty dollars shipping and handling, and that's for one go for gas interceptor for parking enforcement vehicles. Next is for fire in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. And that's for six routers, antennas, and mounting kits for fire apparatuses. Next is for laser services in the amount of six thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. And that is for heat pump, AC unit, and related components for South Hills Golf Courts banquet room. Next is for laser services in the amount of seven thousand six hundred and two dollars. And that is for annual preventative maintenance on compressors and evaporative evaporative condenser tower. Next is for MIS in the amount of three thousand dollars, and that is for statement of work with Davenport Group to upgrade compellant storage can, um, compellant storage controller firmware version to allow for additional hard disk space. Next is for police in the amount of twenty thousand twenty-nine dollars and sixty cents. And that is for twenty Dell Desk Cop computers for the replacement of ten-plus-year-old systems that will not support Windows eleven. Next is for police in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. And that is for six tactical body armor replacements. Next is for public works in the amount of two thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars and five, plus five hundred dollars load testing. And that is for crane inspections for truck cranes, bucket trucks, bigger Derrick auto lifts and overhead crane. Next is for sewer in the amount of three thousand four hundred forty-five dollars plus two hundred fifty-four dollars shipping and handling. And that is for five spare UV lamps for wastewater treatment plant. Next is for sewer in the amount of fifty-two thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and seventeen cents. And that is for a new mobile column lift for equipment at the waste treatment plant for equipment repairs. Next is for sewer in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-six cents. And that is for one ZT six zero six ISL S Z T six thousand zero turning turn riding mower for lift stations. And finally, we have street department in the amount of two hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars. And that is for twenty-twenty-three John Deere six twenty-four P tier wheel loader twenty-two seven six three eight to replace unit number one ninety-four A zero one twenty-twenty-five John Deere loader.
Two thousand five.
Two thousand five, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chair, Dave Boson.
Mr. Boson.
Thank you, sir. I have three questions on on three different items, and the first one uh is on the gas interceptor for parking enforcement, and I was wondering if Bridget could answer a few questions for me.
Okay, Mr.
Thank you. How many vehicles does Republic have that we are, we are currently paying for or doing the maintenance on?
Uh, they're city vehicles and I believe they have two.
So are they currently doing downtown parking enforcement since the vehicle that has the equipment on it is?
They can, they can enforce on foot.
Well, they can't, okay, so that hour of free parking is.
We've, we've had lax, lax uh enforcement for the month of May while we were transitioning to the kiosks. So the actual like physical enforcement would have started just today.
And and how do they, how do they physically enforce the license plates that are in the kiosks?
All of it goes through, it all reads through their handheld devices that they have.
Okay.
So it all works together.
So do they have multiple people going out and doing it so that they can, so that they can cover an hour? To cover all the streets that have meters?
I don't have that information.
Could you get that for me, please? I'm just not sold on this, on this little, uh, thirty-nine thousand dollars for, for a three-wheel motorcycle that uh especially in all, all, well, that's personally my opinion, cause I think we could buy a, a, a nice small.
We're also looking into a side-by-side.
What's that?
We're also looking into a side-by-side. I just needed, like, I had the information for this one, so I would have the choice to go through either one.
So a side-by-side is the same price?
It's, will most likely be less.
Okay, and that, that was my concern because like you could buy a small vehicle that could hold four people if you had to go somewhere for that same price. Thirty-nine thousand dollars.
We don't necessarily need that, though, for parking enforcement. We, one, typically one person is going around.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. Chief, next question I got is on fire mounting equipment. Uh, is, is this equipment dependent on Central Square?
Uh, Bill Black, fair chief, it is not.
Bill Black, fair chief, it is not. It was originally purchased for the concept that we were going to have Central Square, and they would be able to pinpoint apparatus to send the quickest, the closest unit to the, the scene of an emergency. Because we've distanced ourselves, at least my department has, from Central Square. If Central Square does come through, or the next answer to Central Square comes through, we would be able to utilize that equipment for those purposes. The, the, the parts we're buying right now are actually going to assist us with preplanning, both in the actual making the preplans, where we can go to a, for example, the Blacks Building, the lieutenant can take off the handheld part of the, the computer program, make use of the tablet. They can do things such as, here's where our panel box is, here's where our NOX keys are, as well as at the emergency, being able to pull up that address and see exactly those things that they've, they've already impending.
Well, good, thank you. I was, I was more concerned with the Central Square. I'm just not confident.
I'm not either.
Okay, thank you, sir. And my, my last question was for Mr. Bennett on the, on the loader. And basically, sir, all I'm asking is, is it, is it twenty-twenty-three? What kind of warranty are we going to get with this?
Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. This one will actually come with a five-year warranty on the actual unit itself, for like the transmission engine, all that stuff.
Okay, then that's basically a new, new warranty, then?
Yes, it is a new warranty.
Even though?
And it's a nice thing about it, so like, you know, because this is actually a unit that has a few hours on it, but it's so, but it still comes with like a new, just because if you look at the cost, it's significant less than what?
Sure.
Like, say, a brand-new one would be. But the nice thing is it still comes with that warranty, and especially when you look at some of the age of our older loaders. Plus, this is the next size larger than the five forty-fours that we've been using, which is more adequately sized for like our snow blower and the other attachments that we are putting on it.
So this is probably, is this the same size as the one that we're renting?
Yes, but that's for a different department, but yes.
Yeah, that's for sewer or, or waste management?
Sanitation.
Sanitation, okay. Yeah, that was, I was more concerned with the warranty. I appreciate it, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowson. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then finally, for bills payment, for May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, that amount is twenty million eight hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Excuse me, and for June second, that amount is two million six hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. I make a motion to receive file and forward to the full council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.